Ismail, what's in this new build eighty that wasn't in seventy-nine?
I didn't create that.
Oh, okay. That was that was the mean then. We'll ask him when he jumps in.
I agree from the PR, it says setup O T A.
Not sure. Oh, over the air?
Yeah, and also he fixed the white screen issue. I mean, did?
Well, I fixed it in my PR. That's right, my I added it, so it should be fixed.
Yeah, it was. That was included. So. You had, I think you had two PRs included, right?
Both of my PRs were included. And, uh. Yeah. Uh, let me see here. Yeah, they're both my PR. I think that's it. I remember we were doing PR for Amin on yesterday specifically.
Did Almit drop?
Yeah, but he's back.
Amin jumped in.
Yeah, he'll be back.
The white screen issue was fixed in seventy-nine, I think, because I got in yesterday to that one.
Yeah, the build's looking good. Had a couple of questions for Ismail.
All right, well, we're all here now. Uh, do you want to start with those, Sean?
Sure, yeah, I mean, one of them was just a styling issue. Did you take a look at that? Ismail, I thought we, uh.
Yeah, uh. Yeah, I mean, change it, I guess it's too much space, I can reduce it, which I will do. Uh, haven't started on that specific one, I was looking into some other problems that I found.
Okay. Yeah, it's, uh. It's a lot different than how I remember us leaving it off. I mean, typically, the reaction would be, you know, right under the message bubble.
I mean, that's maybe because I shoot, I. Something with the line height?
I don't think it's, maybe.
Yeah, I'll check it. I mean, yeah, I guess when I tested it, there was a square, well, I don't know. Huh, that's a little weird.
No, no, the one that looking good when we left it off.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I see it on the last message, it looks fine. But almost before it, it looks a little off, but the one before it does have a. Uh, what's it called? An emoji, but still it looks like that. Obviously, yeah, Sean is kind of, uh, testing it, same. Yeah, I guess it's only when you have any emoji that you see it. She said, may, not, like, when you have an emoji alone, you know how it creates extra spattering? But your example, there wasn't one.
No, that's just the reaction.
And that was a receiver. Okay, yeah, let me take a look at that, I'll see. Not sure why that's happening.
All right, um, also, I think it'll be a better experience to not have the modal come up. On the, on press of the event preview card. Did you get that message to you?
I did get it, so what do you want it to do though, like, just navigate?
Yeah, navigate to the topic, because we have that little bar at the top where you can view the event details. Just because, uh, Todd made a good point, you expect to be able to type, and it even says tap. Um. To reply to this message, like, on, in the preview, but you can't reply from the modal, so it's.
Okay, I couldn't revert that to the way it was.
Yeah, I mean, it'll still come up when we tap the, uh, review the details, right?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. And then that last question was about. Uh, doing a production build with our. Our bug fixes and some enhancements, but, uh, still keeping some of our branches that we're testing, Friend Connect. And things like that.
When you say Friend Connect, are you just talking about the auto-start, like, it just pops up automatically?
Yeah, that.
That one, I can just remove the API, so that's fine. I did add logic to the looping, you probably concerned about the looping, right? Or?
Just, I don't know, it just needs a lot of testing, you know, it's one of those things, I really don't want to release it with a fatal flaw. It will, I don't know, it's, uh, too important, so we'll test it more this week.
Yeah, I mean, I could just remove that API call, I could skip it where it doesn't get crawled, so. I won't really be reverting or merging, like, everything will be merged, and it's just that specific API would be skipped, so that it doesn't do the auto-start.
Okay. Okay, or we could, um, include it in, only in the build where we use our feature flag or beta tester. Which might be a good option, too, because then we can get even more testing done in, in a safe space.
Yeah, I can have it enabled in one build and not in the other as well.
Okay. I, I think same would go for, um, the, uh, the SMS notification for the, uh, the dormant user if their friend joins. I think, um, Jerry would turn that on and turn that off, is that, is that right, Jerry?
Yeah, well, if I remove the API call, Jerry, wouldn't it automatically not call it? Well, hold on, you're talking about the, uh. You're talking about when they onboard, like, sending the SMS? John?
Yes, yeah, exactly, for, uh.
Right now, I have it set to a static list of users. What we can do is, I can add in anyone who's, is a tester.
I see.
And, uh, we can turn it on by that.
Okay. But bottom line is, it's not.
It's gated off right now. It's gated off and only, like, Oscar Mayer can trigger it.
Okay, excellent, so then. Yeah, I would like to get. The production build with our feature flag on it, maybe later today. What would it take, what's stopping us anything in our way? Ismail, to, uh.
Um, nothing much, I just did find some bugs yesterday, one about my work from with Amidon, and that's when you respond to an event. It looks like it's not registering. Uh, seems to be backend there, so I'm just working on fixing that as we speak. Uh, another bug I found backwards, since was, when I change a profile picture, if you don't have a bio. It won't let you change, like, there's a condition, um, that won't let you change your profile picture. If you have a bio, it'll work fine, if you don't.
I see.
So I.
I had Wells.
Yeah.
Address a bug there, because if you changed your profile picture, it would change your bio to permanent, you know how it's like editable as a new user? And so you fix that, so now you can change your profile picture, and the bio still has the edit button next to it, but it sounds like there's an artifact leftover here that.
Correct, so if you don't have a bio at all, you, you can't change your profile picture, and, uh, I did see that Wells worked on that, so I did message Kevin, he's working on fixing that.
Okay, did that make it into the production?
That is in production, I think, yes, it is actually, that's how, one of my friends, I was telling him, he was working with the gifts, like, I'll, I'll show, I'll turn on the gifts, he's like, I'll just add your profile picture, it'll update them. He's like, I can't change it, it's not changing, I was like, oh, let me see why that is.
I'm glad your friend pointed that out, okay, yeah, again, another reason to get an updated production build, little bugs like that. That's crazy, I'm surprised that hasn't passed through our QA. Wells, you never saw that situation happen, did you test around the profile image?
Um, yeah, and apparently that artifact wasn't produced three months ago, so apparently it was from. The, the, the first, um, making the bio thing, apparently.
But here's what's weird, I've seen new users add profile pictures in the last, let's say, three weeks.
I think if they have a dummy bio, it would work.
Yeah, yeah, because everybody had a bio by default from the dummy bio, that makes sense, why they can get around it.
Uh-huh.
They can clear out the bio, and then you add a profile picture, then you would be able to proceed.
I see, okay.
Again, so a hundred percent cleaning the bio and not a picture having, that's it, yeah.
Okay, so you're, you're gonna get that done for us today, Wells?
Yes, sir, as ASAP.
Excellent, okay, so, Ismail, let's get the bug fix we found around the event, if Almit can finish his, I guess it's backend, but, um, and if Wells can fix the profile image situation. Let's do a production build that we'll test and, um, push as of, with our feature flag today, with, uh, session replay and all that. And perhaps. If you did, if you, you say you fixed the looping on the Friend Connect, perhaps we do include it, but only with the feature flag. Well, here's the thing, okay, let me back, I want a, I want a production version for everyone that fixes these bugs.
I have an idea, how about I include it, and if you don't like it, we just make prod not return anything until we want it to. Like, so I'll make a point to production, initially, it will be returning all the Friend Connect stuff. If we find problems to Friend Connect, we can always just have the backend return it, always return it empty array, so that never pops up.
Really, how, explain how that would work with the backend.
So, the backend tells me when, when to, when, the backend controls when the Friend Connect starts automatically. We can just have it always given an empty array in production, uh, until we're ready.
Would it still work on notification press?
Yeah, yeah, that has nothing to do with it.
Okay. Then that's a good option.
It ju- it just won't auto-start. If there's still problems with either the frontend logic or the looping, or if there's problems with the backend logic, you can always just. Jerry can hard code it to an empty array until we are ready.
Okay.
The best part is, all the people in the past who have it would just work automatically when Jerry puts it back to working. So, if we're on the latest version, like, let's say we release it in, like, two more builds, the people two boats behind will still have it. Because it's working back on logic, unless it's frontend logic, that's a problem, and that's different.
That's what I was gonna suggest, could that be a risk of having some not backwards compatible issues?
Hmm, I guess if there was a, like, a frontend loop, then that would be present on the older versions, yeah.
Well, the worst case is if we hard code, if they hard code the API, if we hard code it to return empty. Um. Even if there's still a response that's looping it, if they force close the app, it should just go away, like, it shouldn't happen again if they close the app. Hard code it open, I understand we don't want them to do that, but it's not like they will forever be in a loop until they, like, reinstall or something.
I see, I see.
Yeah, and I guess you can always add versioning to, like, pass in a version if it's, if, if, if the version is not cooled up. Like, not creating a new API, just pass a parameter as a version, and then if, if it's not above a certain number, it just will return an empty array. So there will forever be having an empty array, the old, the old version of the app.
Okay, um.
Why don't we just get it all together now and just include it when it's ready?
I'm thinking. Uh, I'm so torn, because I. One half of my brain is saying, be patient. And the other one is, let's go, let's go, let's go. Um. Yeah. Let me think about it, let's, let's do our stand-up, and, um, let me think about it, but, uh, at, at the very least. We will expect to do some production build today that is, uh, app store ready. And, um. So we'll need Wells to, to just fix, are there other bug fixes, Ismail, that you're aware of that are, like, critical fails?
Hmm, no, it's just only those two.
Okay, cool, cool, all right, well, let's, uh, let's get started, about, uh.
What about Android? Uh, last build in produ-, uh, sorry, last build, I think. Todd was testing with, it's like seventy-three?
Yes, I was for seventy-nine yesterday.
Seventy-nine went up yesterday, okay, Todd, do you see seventy-nine?
Um, or, public use?
Uh, no.
Um. Gotcha. Let me take a look. Sorry, guys, so. Sorry, Danny, if I confused you earlier this morning, I was, uh, I was looking for the public version.
Yeah, I thought that, uh, I thought that you would only see the latest version in the Google Play Store because of how we're setting up these builds now.
Yeah, I have two, two Android devices, one is the public version, and one's the beta tester. And the one that we were working on was the seventy-three.
Okay, I just want to see if a couple of those bugs still exist in seventy-nine, or really the one with the chats, uh. Where the notification guides you to the topic, but you're actually still in the main chat.
Oh, right, right, okay, yeah, seventy-nine is available, I'll, I'll, I want it, thanks.
Well, the seventy-nine that's available right now is the one that has been available for the past few days.
No.
Because it says updated on January third.
Mine says January sixth, we need to refresh.
I just.
If you closed your, if you closed your Play Store or forced to close it and reopen it, it should update anyway, it says.
Ismail said he just pushed it up yesterday, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the Play Store, uh, Apple's, uh, Test Flight does that, too, sometimes you have to close it and reopen it to get the.
I closed it, reopened it, now it says January sixth, got it, all right.
Can go.
So I will install that version.
All right, so we'll test that, uh, topic thing, Todd.
Yeah, thank you.
And then, uh, all right, Almit.
First thing, like, Ismail sent me one issue. Uh, he was not able to attend the event, so, uh, like, it was, like, earlier design, like, what was there now? Earlier, we can create private, we can share private event into a single group, so later we change it to share it into multiple groups, we can share, right? That was the main issue, so we fixed that problem, we allowed, we can, like, we, we fixed that, that problem just now. Ismail confirmed me also, he is able to that, right, Ismail?
Yeah, it says that it looks like it's solved now, but we do need production.
Yeah, production, so Jerry, we need to put this into production, probably.
Got it.
And second thing, I was working on, like, the refactoring one code, uh, what was it? Profile reaction from user, so I was making more structure with that code. I don't have another task, so can you just send me some tasks?
What were you doing, the profile, what was, what did you say, profile what?
Profile reaction from user, so I was refactoring that, like, to make more structure, it was written by Austin.
Okay, which, um, what reaction are we talking about? If you react on a profile, like, on a card or a feed? Or what, what reaction?
No, it was like, for API name, when you favorite, unfavorite, and save, unsave.
Uh.
That'd be, yeah.
Okay, great, um, you know, I have a great task for you, thank you for reminding me. Um. We have a lot of, uh, requests, including Chantel and others, uh, want to bring back saves. And, um. Ismail saying that code is a mess, Wells took a stab at it, but he was still working with the old flawed code. Um, how much of that is backend that you can restore, not restore, but, uh, refactor for us, and, um. The mo- the more you can do, the better for the frontend, he's gotten really tied up on it, but, like, can you, uh. Can you refactor the, the saves feature and, um, get it to work reliably for us?
Okay, so, yeah, so same API I was working, profile the extra from user, there is the same things also there. So Ismail, can I create separate API for you for save and save, or will it be part of that?
Um, so, I don't know how it's structured right now, I'm not familiar with the code, like, I don't have it in my head map. But you can do whatever you want, because I think, I don't, we, we should honestly just rebuild this thing from scratch, we should not attempt to reuse any of the old code, because it's very problematic.
Okay, can I make a new API for you?
He can, he can do that, that's fine, too.
So, what, if, if Almit makes a new API for it, what does that do for you, Ismail, on the frontend, because I know you said the frontend was a mess, but the, does that take the weight off?
Hmm, not necessarily, but we need, if, if he can do it better than how it's done now, which I'm not, which I don't know if it's done better, to be honest, but he, he, uh, him looking at the backend. He can determine if it's good or bad code, and if it isn't that code, now's a good chance to refactor it, because I, if I do want to do this on the frontend, I would want to re, like. I would attempt this as if it's the first time we even use this in the app.
So you can just work directly with Almit, ignore everything else that was there, and build it the right way, the right, for the first time?
Correct.
That's a great strategy, okay, I like it that a lot, all right, so Almit, yeah, can you, um.
Yeah, I have it.
Get on that one, all right, awesome, okay, cool, what else do you have, Almit?
Um.
Is it?
Okay.
Okay, cool, cool, um. Ismail, do you have any other questions, or anything to add for Almit?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay. All right. Let's continue, um, I have a question for Amin, let's get your update, Amin, and my question is. Um. Did you do the part with Jerry where the beta tester can create their unique campaign link to bring him into the beta test?
Oh, yeah, I was asking yesterday, since it's all backend, uh, I would not need any, you know.
Oh, yeah. That's right, that's right, where does that stand, Jerry?
Let's start, idiots.
Okay, great, um, so in seventy-nine, we could test that. Right?
Any, any build that has the campaign link enabled?
Okay, now, but it should only be. Uh, triggered by users in the feature flag version. Not everybody.
Well, that will depend if the user brings on a link or not. That's how we can, if a user, it's on a feature flag or not, if he.
Yeah, but, okay, but if we have two production versions. It's, you know, one of them has ninety-nine percent of our users in it, they have the original version, but then one percent. Our beta testers, when they generate invite links, that one percent of invite links has to be unique only to them. And strictly to invite into the beta test population.
Uh. Yeah, the link generation happened on the backend, so.
Yeah, just, Jerry, was, was that clear yesterday, is that how we're doing this?
Run that through one more time, I can see that.
Yeah, because the way I heard you say it, it sounded like you made it a blanket link for everyone, but that's not, that's not what we want, we want it to be exclusive. Generated exclusively for the beta testers in our feature flag version, we may have only a few dozen. People in this version creating this, this link that brings people into that version.
That's, that's what it sounds like, I, I, I think I'm on board, I think you're just wording it a different way, like, the only way that they'll get the special link, like, the links are gonna be. The URLs will appear identical, but it's the backend logic behind the URLs that varies, because it checks who's sending the link. If the person sending the link is a registered tester, then it's gonna be the Tesla.
Got it, okay, so there'll be isolated to that population, everybody else that's in the normal app store.
Right.
Okay, cool, so that's, that's good to go.
Yep.
Nice, all right, okay, cool, um, so we'll test that out today, Danny, um, Todd, Chantel. Let's get on testing that right away, um, and, uh, go ahead, Amin, let's get your update.
Um, yeah, so I was working on finishing the O T A. Um. I made sure, like, it's gonna be working, and I've been testing it, I did a build. Where Dolphie is enabled, and I did, like, um, some, uh. Some, like, uh, like, I published some, uh, O T updates to make sure it's, it's all working. So how it's gonna be right now, it's like, gonna be for this, uh, this two users, once they put their phone number. Uh, if there is an update, um, available, it will be downloaded and applied, so they will get the latest, um. Uh, updates without to have for both of them, so I know that. And also, uh, I made that into our, in our CI, so we don't have to do all that now, so we can do it, um. Automatically through the GitHub workflows, and it's gonna follow the same game we do on full build, so it's all like, uh, same as, and, uh. Uh, to, 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 to a point, it's, um, automatic. Uh, yeah, that's all I've done, and, um. It's in, uh, 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 it's in a PR. Nah, it would be in a PR like in a ten minutes, but yeah, uh. Yeah, I guess after that, we either prioritize working on that session expired issue. Or I can.
What was the session expired issue?
With the fibers, that's why we're doing the O T updates.
Oh, the one, yeah, that one user, yeah, 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 uh, well. Don't we have to still get the user in that version, like, that'll take a day or two, right?
Yeah, they will need, um, so there's two ways, two, well, I'm not sure if it's gonna be a producer or an API. Maybe that user is willing to join our QA. And you can just download the QA from Test Flight. And from there, I will do the updates to that, uh, QA. Or we will have to do a production build with the O T enable.
Right, 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 okay, um, I'll talk that over a little bit, with Danny, see what's best, so. Being that, it's probably gonna be another day, at least on that one, let's, uh, you were gonna say the other.
Yeah, I'm still working on the, uh, first, uh, the first favorite flow.
Yeah, let's, let's get that finished up, because, uh, it's almost done, I think.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, let's do that, and then I'll let you know about the.
That's awesome.
All right, thanks, Amin. So, I think we. Pretty much got Wells' update, is there, Wells, do you have more to add, um. Besides what you're doing with the profile image?
Yeah, so for the onboarding and conversion, I added extra logs there for extra situations that can happen in there. It's not really descriptive, but at least the logs, uh, what's happening, like, there are messages, that kind of thing. Uh, on the amplitude properties, so I, I'm still, um, testing that before opening API, but the event should be there, so. All there, that's, that's testing and opening API, right?
So that, that'll log, um, like, if a verification code wasn't received, or if it was entered wrong, or what, what kind of error logs?
There are a lot, um, if the user mistyped the code, so like, if the code is wrong, but like, verification worked. So, uh, we know when, when the code is wrong, or, um, if something happened and it is unknown ever. So there was a, a message to be shown there and that kind of thing, so it was like a, a Firebase error, or the kind of thing, error, we will see the error in the event properties. And if it was like a no, an unknown error, and, and we kind of show the user, like, hey, something's happening, try again later, we will see that as well. So we'll see these three different scenarios. Uh, of error logging on, on amplitude regarding a user interaction with the form verification step.
Okay, okay, that's great. Thank you, what else?
Yeah, so that and working on the error with, uh, uh, Ismail now.
Very good, all right, thanks, Wells. And, um, okay, so Jerry, trying to update the app for us.
Yeah, well, we went over the campaign link and the invite there, we also made a ton of improvements to the daily report, did you get a chance to check that out?
Yeah, yeah, briefly, um, I do want to take a closer look, though, we were wrapped up pretty much all day.
Okay.
Other, it's, yeah.
I understand, yeah, give it a look, add it some more information, let me go over it really quickly. On like iPhones, like grouping the emails, okay, so. Our invites, we have views and registrations, we have those split out by campaign versus non-campaign. Um, we also have now, let's see. Let's see what else, oh, yeah, contacts, we have the contact split out, so you can see which ones were important versus which ones were input manually.
Okay, great.
And now for the new in, new users and invite requests, that section right there, you're gonna see a new column. Uh, for new users, you'll have a column for invitor, uh, Danny asked for this, you'll see a user key next to the invitor, and you'll see who. He can look up who invited that, for example, if you look at the report, you can see Ariana invited three users to the app yesterday. Um. And also for invitees, you can see that there were, looks like. For the invites created. Michael Vargas, uh, three by Ariana. So there is information that's added to these reports, that should help you and Danny kind of run some numbers or check things, work your way there.
Great, that'll be very helpful.
Yeah, so, um, give it a look, let me know what you think, and for the, uh. Yeah, so, um, give it a look, let me know what you think. And for the, uh, for the today, we're gonna make probably a, what's it called? Probably a web link, web group campaign link for the chat invite. I don't think we'd need it right now, but it's gonna be for, um, when we wanna take groups public. It'll be, it'll create like a campaign link that adds somebody into a group whenever they want, or if they already have the app, it adds them to the group.
Yeah, no, that's, that's something we definitely want. Uh, so essentially, if I wanted to invite my organization in, I could just send one link. They'd all end up in the chat.
Uh, yeah, if they click the link, they'll end up in the chat.
Right, right, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, um, and for testing that, um, for testing that group invite, I mean, I can create a group or something and, uh, I can send y'all a deep link, y'all click it and y'all hop in group.
Perfect. Probably should, I think we talked about this earlier. We should have some front-end indication, a modal or something that says, welcome to the group.
We started working on a design for that, actually.
Okay.
Very quickly realized that it's using really easily, but, um, we have it designed somewhere for it and we started off.
Maybe Chantel, you could, uh, finish up a, a design that indicates to the user the link they clicked on, brought them into the group chat with their fellow organization members. Okay, that's for Chantel. Awesome. Chantel, are you there?
Yeah, sorry, my mouse wasn't working. I was trying to get to the button, but it wasn't. I need to unmute myself, sorry. Yes, I, I will, uh, check on what design I have. But yeah, so it's to just let them know that they've been invited by an organization.
Well, that, that joined a group. How are you gonna phrase it, Danny?
That they've joined-
Oh, yeah, we did that. We did that the other day.
Okay, Danny, take a look at that design.
Oh, he was the one that helped me on it, so. But I'll, I'll put it in that chat. Uh, I'll put it in Slack.
I wanna see it again because I just don't remember us. I, I feel like when we stopped working on it, we were like, okay, this is good, but isn't perfect. We're like in love with it, so.
Yeah, so we'll, I'll, I'll drop that in Slack with Russell and it.
Drop it around to a couple of people, make sure it makes sense to some people, Danny. And, um, yeah, after you do that, Chantel, you had a question in development? A bug, maybe?
Oh, yes. Uh, so I was just, uh, I checked in and I tagged two of my friends and, uh, so that, that started the new message, which was cool. Uh, it also started that animation of, uh, you know, this is your new topic, it's created by favorites and then, uh, you know, that, the whole three screen, which I realized it didn't make sense in that moment because of how it was created.
It did or didn't?
It did not make sense because it's talking about, uh, your favorites become topic. I was like, wait, did I, I didn't favorite it. I checked in and then it says shared, but then below the, the system message says check in and then when you go to the topic, it says that I checked in and tagged those people, but it also replaced my name with Emmy's name, which Emmy was the last person who did, uh, activity on it because she, uh, reacted, uh, her emoji.
Yeah, let's stop, get to work there. So, Aman, can you take a look at the message Chantel sent to the development channel? Looks like, um, Chantel's saying she checked in with a friend and tagged a friend, but now the friend's name is showing up next to her profile picture. Do you see that?
Yeah, and it says shared with you and Michelle. Uh, and then you can see the system message below that says that I, I tagged Emmy and Michelle in a check-in. So that part's correct. It's just the top part. And it just, it, it didn't make sense with the very first slide when I got that animation, like, the favorites are shared.
Uh, that we discussed this next, so can we check that, so save, so we check it there.
Guys, can we take a look at the development channel?
Uh, yeah, we, uh, I'll see what's up now. I started working on, working on styling.
There is some styling issues there as well. I see like the system message is way below the card. And also a couple of those emojis are cut off and not center aligned.
Oh, that's on hand, really don't think it's interesting. Was that, was that the case or is that new?
Is that new, Chantel?
I think it's new because I feel like that's something I would have noticed.
Yeah.
It doesn't look good.
I didn't notice until now either, so yeah, I think it might be new. But it looks like those, um, three emojis are sitting below the the little SVG on the right, if that's an SVG, whatever that little icon is.
I never touched this. I don't know if it's come from there, so that's weird.
It's probably the line spacing of the text that says start typing.
Uh, good point. Yeah.
Take a look at that. Move this system message up, fuck it under the card, right, right below the card. And then of course, the, the whole name situation, you see how it has her friend's name next to her image? Is that, that's a frontend issue?
Is it still like that or did that go away?
Like, if I close it and reopen it, let me see. Okay. So I closed the app, I reopened it and my drawer's only coming up like halfway and I can't click on the message button. Like, the drawer's reactive, but none of my buttons are doing anything. Uh, okay, so I can, I can only scroll right now, apparently. I can, I can scroll and move the drawer.
That's okay. Then the drawer only goes up halfway?
Yeah.
And you reclose it, reopened it, it right back to the-
Okay.
Or the home screen, homes?
Yeah, it just went straight to the home screen and I can't do it because I closed it and reopened it and it just went straight to my home screen with the wheel just below the last people of the circle of trust. It still says my, it still says Emmy Sano with my picture, just like how it is in this screenshot.
Could be a backend issue, um, the data's not being turned properly.
I have a theory that it says Emmy Sano now because she was the last one that did any interaction.
So more of the-
So she reacted to it.
So you're looking at a, looks like this is a, you shared a place?
Well, actually, I, I checked in and tagged.
Oh, you were tagged in it, okay, okay.
Well, no, I, I did the checking in and I tagged them. So just the, the system message below is correct.
Well, when I tag people, I don't get a system message. Why is that? Anyways, um, so, okay, so when you first created it, was it like this initially or was it?
Uh, I don't think it initially said by ni, her name. I could be wrong. I noticed it after she, uh, after she her reacted to it, but I know-
I think it will create now when you checked in and tagged people, that time-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Back, will, will you be able to like view this chat and see what the backend's returning or is that gonna be hard?
Sorry, Smith?
Can you view what the chat is returning or is that gonna be hard?
I didn't understand what you're saying.
So, uh, there's the wrong name on who created this group and it was created by check-in. For Chantel, would you be able to look at specific group, knowing the members or is that gonna be hard? To see the response of the chat?
So you are talking about who has created this group?
So if you go to the dev, to development channel and you look at the picture, it has Chantel's picture, but somebody else's name.
Okay, that I can check one minute.
And in the system message, you can see it says Chantel tagged.
Ah, so that is, yes. So sender will be the Chantel here. Since she tagged us. It is a phone, give me two minutes.
Okay, while I was doing that, I wanna figure out this bug that Chantel just experienced, so. Um, is this Android specific? Is this, this build specific? Have you, have you had this happen in any other builds, Chantel? Where you can scroll like that and, uh, or, or you could scroll, but the buttons weren't working?
Not in a long, long time.
And, yeah, what's the current state?
It's working now. It was just, I had closed, I did like a hard close. So it was, it wasn't in the background or anything. And then I went and opened it and I, the drawer came just below my second row of circle of trust and I could move the drawer and I can scroll my profile, but none of the buttons were working.
Maybe it has something to do with the drawer not opening all the way?
It shouldn't matter, because the drawer has not opened all the way for a while in certain cases and everything else still works. So none of the buttons, did you try the buttons on the nav bar?
I did. Yeah, I tried all of those. I tried clicking on like the friends, followers to see if I can pull up any of that. I tried the hamburger menu. I tried the edit SOT button. I tried, um, all of like the levels and, uh, the piggy bank, the positivity points, like all of those buttons. Nothing was working.
See if you can recreate it. What did you do before that? Did you tag a friend in a check-in or what, what did you do before that?
Yeah, so before that, I checked in, I tagged my friends. I had it open just sitting on my desk for a minute, uh, for a while. And then I hard closed it and I reopened it.
Amin, can you think of anything? Is it related to the drawer not coming up? I mean, were you, were you following that situation? I'm here, I'm here. Oh, he says he's here. Uh, okay, um, last one gets back. Yeah, Jerry's here.
Um, I have, it looks like eight messages. I've got like notifications of messages from you saying like, are there any SMS messages or something like that? I got a few, but I can't find them. They're not in my lobby or anything.
That's something you're saying, I, I sent you, then you got an SMS, but?
Yeah, like your, the message said something about getting SMS. Uh, are you get, like, are you getting messages or SMS? That was like something to the effect of what you said, so I clicked on the notification. And I don't see any of that message thread anywhere.
Not sure I remember when this was from. Yeah, because this, this may have been from a, a while back. I think we were, we were testing, and I know we were testing external chat, maybe that's what I was talking about?
Maybe. Yeah, I, I just had a notification that I had like eight messages, circle messages. And when I went to click on the notification, it-
This is nothing, this, uh, nothing I did this week. It would probably be from a while back.
It's weird that I would have gotten it because I'm a psycho when it comes to clearing notifications. Like, I do not like having notifications for more than like ten minutes on my phone. So it just coming in as eight notifications and it looked like you were saying something about SMS. But then I don't see anything.
This sounds, this sounds like pretty old, like-
Okay.
Yeah. Maybe it was from something we were testing, notifications that you got, probably were just kinda hanging around, but?
Maybe.
Are you saying you just got these notifications, Chantel?
Well, I, I, I- Hello?
Complete, complete. You just completed, I will speak later.
Uh, I, I had just pulled down my shade and saw that I had a bell um, for the notification, so. Yeah, I, I just got them and it said that I had eight eight notifications, but I don't see anything.
Yeah, it sounds like something maybe we were testing a couple of weeks back with the revival SMS.
Maybe.
Hello? Isma?
Yeah, it's a problem.
Yeah, I checked, I checked like sender is Chantel there only, not, yeah. Emmy Sano is not the sender.
On the backend side?
Yeah, backend side. Can I say my screen? Hello? Can I see my screen?
Wait, is Chantel, is this production or QA?
Production.
Production, yeah.
Uh, so here, see, message tab is check-in. Sender is Chantel.
Oh, I thought I was, um, QA.
No, this is in products.
What builder you want? Chantel?
It says two point one point seven nine updated on January sixth.
Seven nine is prod. Hmm, it said also check-in. Are you sure? That's weird.
So when I click on it, when I click on the topic, it says checked in with Emmy and Michelle. It says you checked in with Emmy and Michelle. It says you checked in with Emmy and Michelle, just as it should.
Oh, but on the preview, it doesn't?
Correct.
And on the topic, does it say your name?
On the topic, does it say?
When you click on the card, then you go inside the top.
It says you.
So it's correct?
Yeah.
Uh, it's only the, only the preview is not working properly. Let me test that. Um. Okay, let me test that. Uh, see, also on it, you would be looking at the preview, okay. Let me actually test that before anything else. I'll look at the part and make sure the code is right, and then if anything else, I have to.
The second picture that I just uploaded to development just shows that it's correct on the topic. And it looks like the font is. Smaller on the topic card and I like it.
Yeah, me and John had worked that. Get a little smaller.
Hey, what's up?
Everyone is sending that, so.
Yeah, where do we leave off? I'm grabbing a bowl of cereal and uh, I'm done eating, but uh, Amin, are you back? Ismael, were you looking into this issue with Chantel?
Um, I was working on. Uh, something else, I was working on the other issue with the card preview part, the wrong naming, stuff like that.
That's what I meant, that's the Chantel's.
Well, I, yeah, I. Gonna look into that now, I was finishing up some styling update, so I will investigate and I'll keep you guys updated and what.
Okay, so what's, you don't think it's gonna be a backend issue?
Uh, it's still not completely possible, but I do wanna, I noticed that it doesn't say check-in. Um, so I think I updated it for the card itself, not for the preview part, cuz they're separate.
That's true.
So I, I wanna make sure I have a log correct there and it's still not working, then I would, um, we got to omit it.
Okay, s- stick around a little bit longer, Amit, let, let's, let Ismael investigate this a little bit more. If, if, maybe you could look on your end, Amit, as well?
Yeah, yeah, I think that, so I don't think it is from the back inside the best level.
But Amit, if you wanna check, don't check the, the card itself, cuz that's working properly. Check it when you, when we, when we pass it in as a topic inside the ma- the main chat.
Yeah, 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 I think inside the main chat on, then there is time and then.
Okay, okay, then it's probably a product, um, I'm committed. I'm tracking up this PR, just need like a few more minutes, I can, I'll start looking into the other one.
Danny, were you working on the testing with Todd this morning against uh? Or did you?
Um, I mean, we had about thirty minutes or so, so I mean, we haven't discovered any problems yet.
Okay.
Other than the one we saw on Android, but yeah, I plan to split off with a few people here, seeing whenever you're ready and get to testing.
Yeah, let's have Jerry join you.
Okay.
And um. Yeah, let's use uh, Todd's, uh, his test phone, I've got my test phone, you have a test phone.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, ideally, we'll get these to uh. Clean slate. And um, start at zero, brand, brand new user, because there are. Certain triggers that happen only for those very, those first time new users, wanna make sure those are. Those are all cooperating.
Yeah. Let's do it.
Are we breaking another call?
Yeah, let's go to the Zoom link, uh, we've been using.
Okay. Give me a minute, I'm just grabbing the microwave, I'll hop in.
Cool.
I'll be here too, for, for uh, for any testing, so just um. Slack me if you.
Um, good part, yeah.
Cool. And uh, and send me the link too, I'll, I'll join you guys when I'm done.
Okay.
Alright, see you over there, Danny.
Yep, see you later.
Hello. Smile checking.
Yeah, he's he's looking into it still on it. Give me a few more minutes. I really want, I wanna get this production built today if we can.
Okay, I'm uh, um, I think it's a backend problem.
Back to the problem?
Yeah, let me show my screen, so if you look here, I just checked in. I think when you create the message, you created maybe wrong, or I'm not sure what it is. But it's mainly when you check, I guess maybe more than one person, I just uh. Checked in with two people, and if you can look, if you look at my other response here, I'm going to created this. If you go here, you can see that, you know, it's you, so almost is mail test, over here says circle message. And over here, if you look at the data that's getting back, if you look at the sender, it says circle message. Which uh. I don't even know what's coming to screen from.
Yeah, it is sendable to the system, and the system that will be sent by the sender, it is circle message only. Yeah, so you go to this, you first one. You are taking zero.
Well, this is where the card is, the sender says a circle message, where the wide state of nature message. It should say my name. So, well, all I'm trying to say is we're mapping it one to one, so whatever is here, we mapped it from the backend. Now, I will change it where it says check in, but that has nothing to do with it. So look at get all group messages, that's where the problem is. Oh, oh, wait, 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 I'm seeing, sorry, that's the system message, I got confused. That is the system message.
Yeah.
But wait a second, why does it say show card in frame, true, okay. So zero is the system, and this is one before it, and this one has my name on there, okay. Even said, you missed it, I think I just, I got confused by the order, one second.
Yeah, that is correct, I think, so card is, zero is the first one. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
And so I'm a little confused here. Hmm. It looks like it's. It gay. The message, this message right here, it's displaying the card based off of this system message object. Uh, not sure why it's doing the. So.
It should be. Based on the first object, first zero element, zero is. Sender is there coming different.
Oh yeah.
First one object is the system message, first object is system, and the zero element is the card.
Hmm. Key. This is weird. Uh. Give you card, get message with reaction. Hmm. Yeah, uh, too specific. Using. See here. Looking around my hair, it's happening exactly like that. Uh, so this is a system. Three. So these are all system messages, but this one. Goes with the react. And um. And then, let's, which is the function that determines. Get message with the reaction. Do you have any kind of reaction inside this object, reaction law, reaction switching law?
Yeah, reaction is also, they're like, fast contact, see, reacted.
There should be any kind of reaction data, is there any kind of reaction data? Let's see here.
No, no. Not, no.
Uh, reaction. Reaction. Okay. So, get message with reaction. This looks for message type is reaction, uh. Or if it's show card in frame, I guess, and it has to do and. This first topic, uh, first topic group, what was the name of it? Was that, was that the name of the first topic in group? Uh, first topic in group, yeah. Uh, first topic in group. If that's the case. Doesn't even. Back it, we've got early ones. Should match them. Uh. This one should be show card in frame. Just three, uh. Do you have enough groups going on here, uh, there? Let's see where I'm used to. But that's first topic in group, what's what's that, what was that for, do you remember?
Uh. First topic in group. And so in the end, so first topic in group, you are used to frame the card, I think, that's why.
So it should still show a message. Uh, we have. And then. Two. Uh. So confusing, okay. Why would it? Do that. So this is. What on, so message one, I'm gonna see if somebody called someone. Message one. We have following. That is. Sender you. Yeah, so that's message one, so if I'm showing message right here.
No.
Yeah, so this is message one, this is. So message one you would say system, so why is message one? First, okay, so it looks like there's a problem with the order. Of how these are returned, it looks like you're in the system message before the actual card on.
No, no. I see inside there is.
Go back here.
So.
If you go back here, you can see that zero is the system message. And then the second one is a check-in, it should be the opposite, the check-in should always be the first message. I think that's the problem.
Check in should be, I think, for good practice, get on good message, I check.
You don't get what I'm saying, I'm talking about the order, the order, the order of them.
Order, yes.
Huh?
Inside that API, no?
Inside the API.
Yeah, can put in the book key.
Okay. Group key is seven zero five nine.
Seven zero five nine, it is on pod, right?
That's its QA.
Okay, and what did I request the user?
The requesting user key is four one one two zero. It's clear. I mean, I'm I'm seeing it right now on my screen, if you're looking, we have a system as this message first and then the check-in second, should be the other way around. And this is from the backend, and this is the get all group message. So if I clear those. You just give me one second.
API is returning you ma- ma- message by descending order, so yeah. First point is created, card, then second one is system message.
Uh let me see if that's right or wrong. It shouldn't be the other way around, or no? Yeah, you check in first, then you give the system message.
Ready?
You should check in first and then give the system message.
Then what do you select? We did not do anything. Please go to the normal topic now, it's also coming same way.
I actually have another topic here. There it is, so this is a topic. Yeah, so the first one is the first, always the first one is like the group. So. What I'm saying is, you when we check in, you create a system message and you create a card, right?
Yes, yeah.
The miss system message is created before the card. Like when the API when it returns though. It returns the system message before it returns the card. Does that make sense?
And let me see.
But do you understand what I'm saying first, before you share your screen? So like it's it's it's. It's as simple as if you look at my, do you do you see?
I we did not do anything there.
I well, this new code is this this whole check-in thing is new, but it wasn't there before. You added this recently. You check in and you tag a user.
Back end is API returning you message key by descending of. Like system message created, uh. You return later, so it will come as first, and then this card is created later, it will come as second from the.
I get that, but I I need to see the the we on the front end where where we always assume that the first. Message is the topic card.
How it can, how I can handle it from the back end?
Then you need to reverse the order, you need to first give me the card and then do a system message, so when you do a check.
What about other messages, what about other messages here?
What do you mean other messages?
Like suppose if you have heard message. What do I want this way, send someone, this group if someone send a message again, how I can handle it?
If somebody sends a message again, I'm not sure what that means.
Let me save my screen. Here, this is your get all group message. This one you can see and two objects, first one it is check-in. We can see three, their message key three one four zero three, the second is system message, three one four zero four. System message created a later after creating the card.
System message was created later, right?
Yes.
Okay, and that's what I want, I want the system message to be second.
But see, if it is returning your descending order, not here, how I can change order?
It is returning in descending order.
Let this message, this will come first.
Well. Okay, I'll see if we have the same thing, cause over here.
See message here, three one four zero four, it's later system message.
Again, so yeah, let me see group details. Your messages data. Okay, so. It the first one, the message key three three check-in. And then, okay, so which one should be, which, okay, which one is for you, I see that check-in is first.
Hmm.
That's the number zero at the array, right?
Correct.
Yeah, for me it's not, so that's what I'm saying. That's weird, I don't get why, so look, do you see my screen?
Why it's, hey, absolutely.
Look, do you see that? So zero, the first element in the array. Is check, is system. And then one is check-in.
Why it's?
I don't know. Well, I don't know, I I don't think I changed the order of it, this. Do I change the order of it on the front end? Yeah, so I, no, this is the backend, I I I, this is, I didn't even touch this, this is from the backend block. So this right here is not. So here, passing these parameters. I see what you're saying, you're saying that for you it's different, but that doesn't make any sense. Here, try passing in these. Exact parameters.
This is first one is system, here, descending order, five, it's uh check-in, that is always appearing screen.
First one is system for you?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, that's wrong, it's the first one should be check-in, second one should be system, right? Because even if you look at the order.
It's nearly that you are not trying to understand it. It was this first one when the card was created, no, first, this message created first, three one four zero three, that one is the card.
So so what determines what gets created first, the system or the check-in?
Check in.
What determines that?
When you check, we do check in then after the system message.
I get that.
I below that.
What what triggers the system message to get created?
When you do check in, that time it will create first the card, then after it will create a system message.
I'm checking fine, let me see, so let me see other. Let me see something, so you're saying that they're all like that? So let me see.
Yes.
Group details, get all group messages, create the data. And what we see is we have the message key nine on top and then smaller one after. Okay.
Hmm.
Nine on top, and smaller one after, which is the same for this one. Because we have. Big on top, small under, okay. And you can't make the system message get created before the card. You said, so I'm not telling you, so I guess the order is correct, it's just the order that they're created, but saying. Yeah, so can that not be changed? So like, the order is correct, you have the big on top, the message key, and the one after. But can we check in first and then create the system message, is that possible?
It is happening, we are doing check-in first, system message, you can see the message, we key. Check in first, then system message, you are saying that do space method first, you are saying create system message first, then do check in, or is what's?
Um. Hmm let me see. Okay, uh. Okay, I need to review the logic, see what I did there, you can drop for now, I think I have everything I need.
It's mean do one thing, share a card, share it in place or topic, inside, you create inside paste. Share it, share a place or anything and add description also there, see what is happening. Go to app. Yeah.
Well, I need to see, this one looks a little, cause I think this logic is dependent. On this right here.
No, it's not, I will, you are already handling it, I will tell you, yeah, I will tell you, go, go to your stack and share it.
I I if we go to like other places, let's see, we see cards.
No, create new.
Yeah, see, these these are.
I think you're already handling it. You already handling it, so I will tell you, go, go to there.
Okay, where do you want me to go?
One new. Yeah.
Just create a new topic?
Ah, new topic, yes.
Okay.
Create new topic, with place, place finder and many things, create with place.
Okay.
Add text also, add text also here, add text also. Suppose this is system message, okay, now go, you handle it now, yes. Go back, go, you can see that there is points, what is. It will always come this, card will come first, card will come first, next will come second, the key, it will be the higher, go and check.
Three one, uh four zero six, three one four zero six. Cause and this is. So we have, this is topic. Oh yeah, this is a topic. The first one is the test. Second one is the topic. No, wait, is this the right one, or is it, or is it gonna go to zero? Oh yeah, zero. Here it is, so, yeah, so zero is. The top, yeah, that's the top, like this is. And second one is the card.
Next one will be the topic. Card, yes.
Hmm.
You are only handling for this one, so you have to do for. People checking.
I am handling for this. But why is this one not cooperating in terms of with that because? So the second one was the card, right? So we say that first is actually, this one is the card. And that's, let me see, what was the number one is here. That's nasty, look to the first.
I I understood that part, I think it's handling because both the message type is text here, no, but in that case, two different message type is coming. One is coming, the message type check-in, and one is coming. System, that's why you thought, but the logic was. See, the message type both being the same, so it is handling with this one also.
Wow. Hmm. Okay. So and we have. Oh, so I'm still creating this topic out of this one, which is created, no, okay, I see. Yeah, you're right, so that that is why. It's because. Because I assume that both cards will have the same topic. Yeah, over here, if you look at the data.
If message type has been changed since one is checking and one is system. If message type has been changed since one is checking, one is system.
Not just that, more importantly.
And the sender has been changed also. Tender.
Standard has been changed, that's.
Tender has been, yes. That's why you are.
Yeah. So. Okay, I see why, okay, so it wasn't, I wasn't. No, it's too near, so I wasn't mistaking, I think. Think the way to handle, hopefully this won't cause any controversy, so if we have. System message. One, if, and that's gonna be the very first one. Showing frame. Okay, so I need to add extra logic here, if. System message one, the system message type equals. Uh, check in. Our system. Equal system. Then we need to return. First one, which is, or the one after it. System return to. Else. Return one.
Currently back it for you.
Okay, so. Turn message to. So now we'll say check in. But if we go to the other ones. Which is, there will be. You shared, yeah, shared, shared, okay. Okay. I think that's the fix for now, yeah, I don't think it's will call any rest, any other problems because. There's no other case scenarios where it could be system, the second one could be system message showing frame. Yeah, this one will be. So I think we're good. Well, the, I thought, cause like in my head, I was like, I should be returning two, why are we returning one, right? And then I was about to, though it looked like it needed to be flipped, but the problem is. I was always looking at the, at the data of the first, but they always match, except here.
Yeah, 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 because both messages are same type, message type that takes.
Yeah. Okay, cool. Yeah, that was confusing as well. Alright, I'm, thanks for sticking around.
Thanks, thanks for the, can I drop?
Yep, it's all uh, actually, I wanna give my. Yeah, uh, my dad, I mean, I'm just gonna add this to my current PR, uh. She wants, look at her real quick. And someone just reviewed, uh, with the styles, it's just one line, or it's just like two extra lines of code. I'll be back in a few minutes.
Okay, um, you missed it, um, when Chantel was talking about. A bug she had on her Android, she is in the latest version. She was, uh, having a bug, the one that, just know, just fixing the defect around the name and stuff like that, but. You have to force close the app and see if the name will change. She forced closed the app, reopened it. And, um, the drawer came up only halfway. But, um, none of the buttons were clickable, nothing on the nav bar, nothing on the home screen. But the drawer and the scroll view were the only things working. What could, what, she hasn't had that problem in a very, very long time, nothing like that, so. Could it be something, did you work on the drawer at all, or could it be something with something recently you worked on?
Um, I don't know, I've been doing it for a while. It's still not managed, so, um, okay.
Okay, I'm gonna see if she can recreate it.
No, uh, I couldn't find anything related to the drawer.
Yeah, uh. Can you check anything in logs to see why that might happen to her? Actually, we should, she should have s- uh, maybe not, I don't think she clicked on the campaign link, but she might have session replay enabled.
What's, um, the front end she's using?
Um, six one five. Six eight six. Three four.
Six four five.
Six eight six. Three four one four.
Yeah.